Thank you, thank you very much, thank you. Thank you Dr. Mbuyzene N'lozi. I never thought Mbuyzene N'lozi would get intimidated, until we arrived in Midren. And I know where your fear comes from. That's the problem with the township and the suburbs. So when you go to the suburbs, you're like, this is an apartheid la. So I don't belong to that level. Let me greet our leaders, provincial secretary, the branch leadership, the regional coordinator, and all leaders who are here, including Dr. N'lozi, who's responsible for elections in Khauteng. We've got a by-election in Polokwani, Ward 10. A councillor of the EFF was arrested with weapons that were stolen from government offices. And when we asked him what happened, he said he was a traditional healer. So these people brought the weapons to him to cleanse them and cleanse these criminals. And unfortunately, he was found with those weapons. We don't believe this story. So we went to visit him, went to visit him in jail. And he explained the story. After he explained the story, we gave him a resignation letter to sign. Because in the EFF, we harbor no criminals. And that's why we have a by-election tomorrow. So that was our word. And many people were saying, no, we can't do that now. What if we lose it on all of that? Well, rather lose the word than to accommodate criminals. Because you must always know that you are amongst men and women of integrity who do not violate the laws of the Republic of South Africa. So I was asking him to go and speak tomorrow. At Ward 10 in Polokwani, he refused. He says, no, he's working in Khauteng because tomorrow he's got a meeting in Lordyam. The reason why I was sending him is because the ANC is sending Paul Marchandille tomorrow. So I thought, who's the match of Paul Marchandille? And then I thought... I thought Dr. N'lozi was the most appropriate person to encounter Paul Marchandille. We are happy to be here. And as you know, it's not a very easy period for us to sit in one place for too long. We're here for a very few hours and then we'll be joining the activities, the Sante Convention Centre, which celebrates Colin Mashawane's foundation. It's now turning 11 years. And this morning, we're in Abom. It's now called Mokhopol. So when we got an opportunity to come and speak to the people of Midren, we're excited because you are the most influential people. Sit at here are people who are not only influential in their families, in Midren, that their opinions matter even where they come from. Because majority of them are breadwinners. You all know that our population lives in extreme poverty. That 29% of our people live in extreme poverty. They are surviving through social grants. But South Africa as a whole pays 18.8 million grans. And that constitutes 31% of the population. So you have a situation where 31% of the population receives grants. It's on grants. And those who receive grants live on extreme poverty. So, and the extreme poverty, you know, is extreme in a sense that a person lives below 41 rand or 42 rand per day. That's what extreme poverty means. 31% of the population of South Africa lives on less than 42 rands per day. And we cannot sit back and allow the situation to perpetuate. We have a responsibility to rescue our country. And when we launched this organisation in 2013, the aim has been very simple. We need to upset the status quo and introduce a new alternative. Because in any way, the ANC is going to self-destruct like all liberation movement in the African continent after 30 years in power. So when the ANC self-destructs, there must be a viable alternative which is going to fight for this 31% of our people who live in extreme poverty. And there is no immediate intention to resolve this crisis of extreme poverty because someone benefits from that extreme poverty. So we must be worried that our people are living in conditions that are not sustainable, especially for us who stay in Midren. Because when this 38.8 million people revolt against the status quo, they are also going to come for us. They will come for us twice because they will say we sold them out. That we arrived and when we were comfortable, we forgot where we come from. And we did not take any steps to resolve their problems. Anarchy is the highest form of disorder. And when that anarchy erupts in South Africa, anyone who owns BMW, Mercedes-Benz, or anything of that sort will not enter the township. Because everybody else who's got an asset that suggests you are part of the elite which has betrayed the revolution, you're going to be a target for assault. So we need to resolve this. And the EFF is the tool that can resolve this problem that is confronted by many of us. People go around saying, no, why is the EFF talking about borders? Why is EFF talking about borderless continent? But there is an issue we raised which they are not bothered to follow up before we go to the borders, which is an apartheid debt. But in 1993, it was reported that we are owing the apartheid debt 25 billion US dollars. Now, what was this money useful? This is the money that was used to buy weapons. If you remember, and comrade Carl Neaus will know that much better than all of us because he was in the struggle against apartheid. There were trucks that carried weapons, military trucks that carried weapons into KZN. And those weapons were procured with this apartheid debt. The aim of those weapons was to kill the people of South Africa. We defeated apartheid in 1994 politically. We also managed to get the UN to declare apartheid crime against humanity. Which means everything else that came with apartheid is unjustifiable and therefore have to be dismantled. They allowed us to dismantle the parliament, to remove the president, to remove ministers, to remove anything that symbolises apartheid. But they never allowed us to cancel the apartheid debt. For, because for generations, we must be indebted to international financial institutions. We now are owing almost 573 billion, which were servicing, and that includes the apartheid debt. So if you minus the apartheid debt to our foreign debt, then we save a lot of money which can be used in our social responsibility programmes. The immediate thing we are going to do when we take over government is to demand that the International Court of Justice should declare the apartheid debt invalid. Because you can't pay for people who are coming to kill you. It's unreasonable, it's unthinkable, and we're being made to carry responsibility that is not ours. We have a duty to make sure that we deliver the land into the hands of the people. And the only representative of the people is the state. The money you have in your pockets is not owned by you, it's owned by the state, it's printed by the state. You can trust the state with the responsibility of printing money for you. But you can't trust the state to own the land on behalf of all of us. You can trust the Maya family here in Midren, at Waterphone, to lease land to you for 100 years. 99 years lease, and your children will not even inherit it when you die. You are so prepared to do that with a private Indian family. You rent from them the land and build huge houses. When we say, let's do the same, but through the state, you say, no, who's going to invest in that? We have already invested in a private owned land. You have a sectional title deed, you have no title deed. You have no reason to even join the struggle to demand title deeds. You don't have. What are you saying? He wants to take our title deed, which one? You don't have. So we give the land to the state, but no one loses anything, including the white minority. Where you stay is declared a place of residence for Mr. Malim. Where you farm, it's a farm of so-and-so, this company or that company. So that we account for all of the land. Once we do that, we're going to find a lot of unaccounted-for pieces of land. Once we discover that, then we give the landless that land. You cannot give people what you don't own or have. So the state has got a duty to give our people land. Because without land, you are nothing. There is nothing that we can do without land. That's why we've been in power for 30 years. We've not made inroads. We could not even produce black metal class. We cannot proudly say, Midren is black metal class. It's not true. Our people are shimming in debt. And the high interest rates and the amount we pay for fuel and all just makes things worse for the so-called black metal class. The ANC has upset even what was potentially a black metal class. Because you don't have the land. And we just need simple historical checkpoint where we say, what did the Boers do when they came into South Africa first? They didn't do anything else, they just took the land. And they knew, once they have the land, no one can tell them anything. Engaged in wars of dispossession precisely for the land. Not this thing that you are doing with Zimbabweans and Nigerians. There's an artificial war, what's wrong? What are you fighting about? They are taking our women, they didn't take women, the whites. When they came here, they didn't take women, they took the land. They knew the land comes with women, with cattle, with... There's no one who owns who doesn't have a woman. The people who don't have women is people who find on the street because they don't own. Ownership and women go together. They must own, the women are not going to be subjects of poverty. So we have to take the land and give to them too. That men should not claim that they are the only rightful people who can work the land. Because the small garden in our houses, it's not you who do that garden, vegetable garden. It is the women. I've been asked myself, where, chief? You need to allocate a portion here because I need to start my vegetable garden. It has never done in me that I must do a vegit... They know that this is the land which must be used. And we have to give it to women. We have to give it to the youth. And make sure that they use the land to benefit the people of South Africa and the world. The land comes with everything that is on the land. That include the sea that is allocated to the side of South Africa. It belongs to us. We need to take the sea and give our coloured communities and African people in the Western Cape, in all coastal provinces, the fishing rights. Because fishing is a big business, especially in China. Once we give our people fishing rights as a result of land ownership, you already have a market which is centred in China and it constitutes the 15%, a quarter of the world population. We're not saying we are not doing business with outside people. Instead of Chinese and Germans and whoever coming to fish here, we must fish ourselves and sell to them. It can't be the other way around. That they fish, go process the... Ivanapfishi, fishi ibola gaspit. Maramo, it gets taken here, gets processed there, and come back here. Something that we could eat fresh, we're being made to think it's impossible. Why is there no factory of tomato sauce in Limpopo? When the biggest producers of tomato, they're in Limpopo, ZZ2. Every day on the N1, you see a truck written ZZ2. As that truck moves, you must know inside that truck is work, is jobs for people of Limpopo, being moved out of Limpopo. That's why you came here to follow those tomatoes. You've got them there. You leave them to go and then you go after them to go and work in a tomato sauce factory, which you could... ZZ2, if he loved our people and loved the province of Limpopo, why is he not opening a factory in Limpopo and create both local economic activity and employment for the people of Limpopo? Why is chrome being transported to Richas Bay? Today, everything else in South Africa can never be built without steel. Which means you've got a market for steel. Not only in South Africa, in the whole of African continent. The biggest factory of steel in Witbank closed down in a country where steel is in demand. Why? Because we ship out our chrome, it gets processed, produce steel in China, bring it back here, and the Chinese come sell it cheaper than our own factories because they too, whatever they use, get it from outside. Why can't we benefit our own mineral resources in South Africa? This Joannisberg is actually a desert. If you go and check, it's a place where there's too much water. And that's why there was never a preferred choice of settlement, even for settlers. There was never a preferred place where human beings must settle. It became what it became after the discovery of gold. That's what made Joannisberg. So cities are made either by natural resources or mineral resources. There's nothing so special about Cape Town. It's too racist. But it is beautiful because it is made because of its natural resources. Table Mountain, the sea. That's what makes it, oh, this can be a proper place of settlement. The other one is the discovery of minerals. That's another place where because people are going to work on that mineral, they must settle there. That's what made Joannisberg. If cities are made by minerals and natural resources, why is Rustenburg the discovery of platinum? Not made Rustenburg a new Joannisberg? Because Khauteng is made by gold. Why is Rustenburg not made by platinum? Why? You must go to Skukuni, Kroblazdal. Kroblazdal and Beggersford, Ginalud confused. Ela di mine, Beggersford. Beggersford. From Polokwani to Mpumalanga, when you pass, you must go and look at the type of houses people have built in those rural areas. Why chrome is such a profitable and easily accessible in Beggersford? To an extent that it's mined by gogos. They mine it and pile it behind their houses. When you ask them, why are you doing this? They say, no, one day someone is going to come looking for this. They are not lying. And they are being called illegal miners. And some uncle doesn't allow them to touch any piece of land. They go by force, they are mining with TLB. Not excavators, TLB. That's how accessible that mineral is. Without the state intervention, people are mining there, getting money, building themselves beautiful houses. They are turning that into a beautiful city. But it will never be a city until the state takes a deliberate decision that this is a special economic zone and we're going to create a beautiful city out of the discovery of chrome. There's nothing that can stop any place that has got minerals. We are number one, by the way, in the whole world with platinum. And when we take Zimbabwe and platinum, we're worse. The rest of the remaining platinum outside us and Zimbabwe, majority of it is found in Russia. How can we and Russia not become friends and determine the price of platinum? Our price is being determined by people who don't have platinum. But we've got platinum. All of that must not be spoken about because you are going to scare investors. It's not true. Investors look at your laws, your rules, the stability, security, and all of that like, how can we make money out of this? They even make money out of sponsoring instability of DRC. They go and buy blood diamonds. In the war-torn countries, investors still go in there, build a landing strip in a forest, and then make that country not to be functional so that they go and land and take what is there and leave. So why do you want to speak about investors as if it's some high moral people? They are so immoral because their priorities, not human beings', is profit at all cost. So let the land bring all of this to us. There will never be jobs if the patents of property ownership in South Africa are not tilted to the benefit of all. The ownership of property, look at Soweto. Is Soweto's house today is not less than 500,000? Why? Because they discovered that with democracy, everybody is equal. So which means these houses of Soweto are now going to be an asset that can be used for borrowing and all of that. Which means these people will own property. So what do we do? You make sure that you inflate the market so that they don't afford. Everybody has got a right to buy the house. But where is the money to buy the house? So they use the money to keep the racism in the property ownership of South Africa. Cape Town is being auctioned today, every day, through selling houses in Cape Town to foreign markets exclusively. If you want to buy a house in Cape Town, you have to find someone in the UK to say, no, this is me. Then they lease them, then they say, come and bid. Before you know it, there will not be a single house in Cape Town owned by South Africans. Extremely expensive. Something has to be done. And that's why they are opposed to the ownership of the land. Here in Botswana, they give the Botswana people 50%... Botswana State, 50% of profits of diamonds by the BS. The BS is this guy who owns South Africa, Openaimo. Now, they give Botswana government, states, 50%. Say, no, take. And then they come this side. We say, we're asking for 50%. They say, where? How? You're going to scare investors. But the investor is not scared in Botswana. But when it comes to South Africa, the investor is scared. It's not because the investor is scared. It is because South Africa was sold during the negotiations in Cortez. When we were negotiating for our freedom, when Chris was fighting for, against the disbandment of Mkontowe Sizwe, Cyril Ramaphosa and them were already in discussion for shares with Waterphone in the UK during the negotiations. And this were told by him, by the way. And they said to Waterphone, if you come in here through these apartheid agents, we're going to finish you when we take over. We are the future of this country, give us. They can't give you 50% because that 50% is given to our leaders. It's given to individuals. And I'm telling you, these guys are going to be the richest. Why? When they were given the shares in 1994, they said, you don't have money we'll give you. But every time a dividend is declared, you pay us through that dividend until you finish. The information now is, they finished paying that debt. 30 years of democracy means the finishing off of paying the debt of the shares that were given to them. The money is just going to go into the hands of individual. There is no ANC elite that I know now who hasn't received dividends. All of them, anyone of the ANC who was in business then and no karuwawanyana so. Go and check all of them now. All of them are back in the game. Why? The dividends are now being paid fully because they finished paying the debt. You cannot, the BS is not refusing to give you 50%. When Ramaphosa says, but the state must get 50%, but no problem, we take from you. This one that you have. We take it and then deliver it to the state and we take it from Watoto, we deliver here, take from Patrice, back to the state. Done. But mm-mm, you're not talking proper. Let's leave it, we'll come back to it. So we were sold out by our leaders. That's why you need a new government to review all these big black economic empowerment deals, how they came about, and who are the participants. If people were given on the basis of their ANC membership, this must be expropriated to the state, we are not taking from this individual. We are taking and giving to the state, you are a beneficiary yourself in 2D. But now, South Africans are also going to benefit from that. Not individual benefit. Comrades, we are in a deep crisis of unemployment. If there is no any industrialization, beneficial here in South Africa, you must know that there is no any plan in place in the immediate by the current government to resolve unemployment. Load shedding, we are told every day, we must celebrate. Every day we wake up, there is electricity, there must be a part. We have become an abnormal society that celebrate air. But no, today we are breathing this air, let's celebrate, no, but that is, that's, that's what we're entitled to, we're entitled to this electricity. It, it's not something we should be worried about, it should just be there. Electrify the whole of South Africa and electrify the whole of African continent. When we say drop borders, we mean that Eskom was going, it is the only company in the whole African continent which can electrify this continent and they're all payers as the owners of Eskom. So we cannot be told, hey, Nigerians have taken over the business of drugs, what do we do with business of drugs? We want the business of business, not business of drugs. So we have to make sure that we bring in a government that doesn't come in with baggage from Cordesa. Because when you look at these elders, I had a privilege to sit with all of them. Nelson Mandela, Winnie Mandela, I know them. All of them know what must be done, but they are not doing it. Because Matoa Bonaba Tweri. Someone is holding these guys somewhere. What is the point of putting parliament in Cape Town? What do you benefit from that except that there was an agreement in Cordesa? That no, parliament will remain in Cape Town. What, what do you benefit from? Parliament in Cape Town, president's house in Cape Town, minister's houses in Cape Town, deputy ministers' houses in Cape Town? If we relocate that to Pretoria, Senchurun or Midren, I'm told there's a Chinese person here who owns a big portion of land in Senchurun, we expropriate it. Because expropriation isn't supposed to be for public interest. We expropriate it and build parliament here, no one gets to build a house. Parliament is where we are getting paid, like all workers, let's go and look for our houses. Why are we being forced to stay in a parliamentary village? What if I want to stay in Gugulete? You now are forcing me because if I don't use that house, I'm wasting state resources which were allocated to me. Leave parliamentarians to go find themselves houses. Many of A N C parliamentarians, by the way, have houses. That's how irresponsible they are, they don't have even now. After 30 years, they don't know where they are going when they are not on the list. That's why when they are not on the list, they cry like babies because they're like, what's next for me? We need to save as much resource and re-channel it to our people. Why do we need provinces? Why is the premier to do what? What, I don't know what's the role of a premier. My councillor, what councillor? It's actually more important than the premier. Because you know, if the sewer is blocked, that guy must make a plan, come and unblock this. Call Panya and say, come and unblock. Now, in terms of government systems and protocols, there's province and local and, you're going to hear some English. Why do you have an M E C of education to do what? Because education is national. We, our children write the same question paper. There's no Gauteng question paper. The syllabus is national. There is no Limpopo syllabus, even if it's Tonga language, it's national. Those who are learning Tonga in Gauteng, Shawella, they learn the same Tonga in Limpopo. Same, what is this guy doing here? Except to be ceremonial. And that ceremonial thing comes with high cost for us as South Africans. We need a super metro called Gauteng. It must be a local council, the whole of Gauteng with a mayor. Because we know what the mayor can do, we know what the councillor can do. It's a, this must become national straight to local. And then all of these people must go home. We'd rather have thousands of councillors, but we know what they are doing. We can call them, we can reach them, we know their houses, they are allocated to this area. So this, that which you see today was also the Cordesa agreement. And this was done in accommodation of the I F P. Because the I F P was refusing to participate in the election until they agree that K Z N will be a, a province on its own. The A N C policy originally is a unitary state. It's not these sub-states that we are experiencing today which have got no road. When that came, A N C saw an opportunity for patronage. And said, now, at least instead of 400 people, there will be more in the province. You know, in Limpopo Legislature, when they go to a legislature meeting, they talk about it all over, go to Lebanon, they are shocked, members of the legislature, eh, they are legislature, even if you didn't add. Because they go to legislature to do what? They never go there. They, not because they are scorned, because the legislature has got no purpose of meeting. Count how many members of provincial legislature are there in Gauteng? And how much are they getting and what are they doing to benefit me, these people? Because the laws are passed in Cape Town, the laws are not passed here in Gauteng. We need to remove the provinces and reallocate those resources to the poor of the poorest. But as, the biggest mistake which was committed in 1994 was to give us R D P houses. We, Madiba should not have given us R D P houses. Madiba should have given us free education, we're going to build our own houses. Because if you check, if you check the unemployment rate amongst graduates is very low. Which is a scientific proof that education and employment and empowerment go together. We did not need the R D P houses. And these houses, they are building for us, especially yourselves here, you ought to be educating our people. That it can never be called a house if it doesn't have a toilet. What is a house without a toilet? The only thing that we build without a toilet is a shack. Now, I've never found anyone saying, yeah, it's a shack eh, within suit. No, 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 no. Once they say a shack, then you must start looking for, okay, where do they go to help themselves? They give you glorified shacks and call them houses and you celebrate them. No one questions. But in Soweto, in Mamilo, in Atregville, in Seshewu, in Umlaz, they were by courts all over, people saying, we don't want matchbox houses. We want houses. We were looking at those houses which were given to poor white Africaners in town. We're saying, at least if we can have those, will be better. They came, gave us Western, what apartheid gave us. Western, what apartheid gave us. Because Seshewu's houses of apartheid are still standing. I can't say the same about R D P houses which were built in 1994, they've collapsed all of them. But every time, that's why they kept so many millions of South Africans on social grants because they must think that without these people, we are nothing. We have to make education free of charge for all of us, white and black, rich or poor. Education cannot be a commodity. You can't buy education the same way you are buying bread. There must be a difference, education is a right inherited from birth. Our grandmothers are teaching us at home, our mothers are teaching us at home. They are not being paid, that is education. So why when we go to the state, now someone must be paid for us to be educated? We don't get started to be educated at school, we are, we are educated at home. Taught how to walk, how to speak, how, that's education which our parents owe it to us. And no one pays because we're entitled to that education. So why now, when we grow up, it changes that now you must start paying to educate society? An educated society is a society that will not be intimidated by the ruling class. Today, those who are fortunate to work eh, in the private sector, you, you get a white young girl joining the firm, put under her tutelage, train this person and all of that. Tomorrow, when you come back to work, you are now reporting here. Okay, why am I reporting here? You are not questioning the authorities, by the way, you're just asking, why am I reporting here? You go back, man, this girl was empowered by me. I was, the one was teaching, let me go and check your qualifications, she has metric. With all your fancy degrees, you are so comfortable reporting to a metricless Africaner young lady because you are scared of their parents. We want this government of the E F F to empower you so you can speak on your own that I'm not going to report to this metricless, stay in here, it's not going to happen. I've got this and this and this, I've gone to school. We cannot have a black, middle-class worshipping whiteness and scared of whites for no reason. Most of these people of white people are not educated. They threaten us with their skin. We think a skin, white skin means success and success is education. Only this government, that's why we've given you a weapon, most of you are using in your firms. Every time they try to bully you, you say, I'm going to call E F F. And then everything changes. Imagine what we are doing for you now without being in government. How much we can do when we are in government? When we are ministers, who can just walk into any factory and say, what is this now? So that's all we are asking you. You see the power of the E F F outside government, imagine the power of the E F F inside government. That is the power that all of you need. There is no one, all of them combined, who is better than Floyd when it comes to the economy and the finances of South Africa, no one. You know, we don't have time, we'll tell you, when we entered in parliament, we introduced that concept of illicit financial flows. Every time Floyd finishes speaking in the finance committee, they all argue with him and they don't say anything, by the way. When the thing finishes, they're like, eh, take us through, man, what is? What is this? Eh, send us notes, you know, on that, but don't talk, send me notes, I, I want to support that point. We are teaching them about the finance and the economy of South Africa, which they don't know and we are not in government. They say Floyd is going to steal the money, I want Floyd in finance to steal the money. But I am financed in Ikuruleni for more than a year, never stole a cent. They cannot accuse any of the E F F M M Cs in Nelson Mandela, in Johannesburg, in Ikuruleni, in Murali City, in eh, Eteguin. They removed our M M C there, they, they can never accuse them of any wrongdoing. That's why the A N C, even when it was fighting with us in Ikuruleni, they could never say we stole a cent. Because we don't steal money in the E F F. We built this organization from scratch with no budget. Today, it is the only political party that owns a property in the city center of Johannesburg, Winnie Madigisela Mandela House. You look at its activities, its organization and all of that, you can see that with the little resources we have, we maximize and make an impact with those little. You've got posters everywhere. So if there was stealing of money, all of this was not going to be possible. I was telling journalists yesterday that we once did a rally at Orlando Stadium and Muzandla Masina said to me, oh, that stage, yes, that's too much, that's too beautiful. I think that is 10 million. Girl, no, it's not 10 million, it was 1 million. What 10 million, what? It's not true. Because when you give them a quotation of 1 million stage, they say you missed the zeros, add the zeros. Then, after giving you 10 million, they come and take aids and leave you with two. There's an A N C corrupt person who has, these people went to court to win a case, Constitutional Court of 30 million against Gauteng government. Then, they don't want to pay them even when they've got a court order. They say, no, but if you go to Surunso, he can work this thing. You know, they went to this person. He says, no, let me go and check, we'll come back. When they come back, he says, no, money is doable, that thing they agreed. But you'll have to give us 20 million and then take 10 out of 30. The Constitutional Court said, these people have done work, pay them. But no, give us 20. What's going to happen to, to the money that I've spent doing this work? That's why most of our people here, young entrepreneurs are doing business, but we don't know where they are going, we can't see any progress. Man, I'm a businessman, I've got a tender. You've got a tender here, behind you is Paul Machadine. Let, 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 let. The whole of Alexander Mafia is on your neck, let, let, let. Pay, 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 pay. We have got no such history as the E F F. Because we believe with every little resource we have, if properly spent on social services of our people, it will have a meaningful impact. So we are here to say to you, there is nothing that we are suggesting which has not been practiced anywhere, including by apartheid government. They owned eh, Eskom, they owned eh, Transnet, they owned Prasa, they owned Dinel. When we come in, it's not true that these things are not functioning. Those institutions, those government companies are working proper. They are being made to fail so that they can be privatized. Let me tell you about Prasa, Prasa hires, let's say 10 locomotives from, from, from a private company, 10, they say, bring it. Then out of 10 locomotives, they pay 50 million. Then they take six of 10 and pack it. Don't use it, they go and put it aside and use four locomotives. And then they make 15 million after spending 50 million. Then they come to parliament and say, this thing is not working, we spent 50 million, it brought eh, 15 million. E F F, no, this is, no, this is wrong, this is not working, you are eating the money. Everybody in South Africa up in arms, fighting. This thing is taking our money. They made it deliberately to fail. They made it deliberately to fail so that they can win you over. And then they sell these things to themselves. All of you know that Trevor Manuel is a businessman, but you all don't know what he's doing. He's a businessman. But Trevor is involved in insurance companies. A lot of Transnet asset are insured by Trevor Manuel. But because it's insurance, it's not road construction. It's not an easy tender. Look, insurance, who cares? No, it's understandable. You don't ask, "But what is this? Can we imagine an insurance company that ensures the assets of Transnet?" We don't know what business Trevor is doing. But Trevor is being paraded as one of the most successful business people. So we need to own our own state assets. That's where money can be made. If you deploy the best of the best irrespective of their political affiliation. Are they South Africans? Do they have an ID? Do they have the necessary qualification? If the answer is yes, this is the rightful person. Politics is secondary. Politics, give football. After joining Retoma, which team do you support? Must never be a prerequisite for you to participate in the state. So there is no state, anything. So people like Brian, Coco and them, they refuse to participate in making these things to be dysfunctional so that they can be sold later. You are hired to come and collapse this thing. Then we buy it ourselves. How do you buy SAA with 54 rand? 54 rand? There is no peace in a single plane, Dr. Lusi. There is no peace, the smallest peace, in the smallest, minute, smallest peace in the plane that costs 54 rand. "How many doga it top are you?" This one is 54 rand, not in the plane. So to buy the whole plane with 54 rand and people still say, "No, let's give them chance." 54 rand. And then they completely fail. They come and say, "We failed." But we told you before that this is not a good transaction. It's not going to work. No, this is anarchy, disrespectful. We fought with Pravind Godean inside parliament when to disrupt him on the podium that you are selling our state. "Oh, this is..." The same Pravind comes and says, "This was a wrong deal." "Yeah, no, no, no. Let's leave it. Let's leave it. Let's..." And then they leave it like that. It's no longer news, by the way. "Oh, it's done." But in Kandla, we still remember it today. Till today, we remember fire pool. Here is the asset, billions worth of asset sold for 54 rand. And our black brother, Tepo, get used. Successful businessman in his own right allows his name to be destroyed by political elite of the ANC who wants to steal SAA. Under those guys, SAA, if you thought SAA was a problem, just go and look at between that deal and now when they collapsed it. SAA was dysfunctional even when these guys were there. There is no one who cast an SA flight during that period and the flight left on time. If you are lucky, it's hour, two hours delayed. Yet they say, "No, there is now a private participant. This thing is going to be successful." It's not true that when it is private, it's inherently successful. Because there at the Commercial Court, they liquidate private companies every day. But there is no government company that get liquidated there every day. So of course, other things must be left to, you know, individual businesses to run. But comrades, how do you say this individual is responsible to giving people electricity? We say, "No, let's collapse Eskom generation of electricity. Rupert shall produce this electricity for you." "Who knows what... It's an individual. They just wake up angry." "And just switches over." That's what we do with our farms, with our houses. Let them say, "That gate must be closed." "Mama, what went wrong?" "Ay, I don't feel like it, not today." So Rupert wakes up, Baba La says, "Not today. I don't feel like giving them electricity today." When we say the ownership of strategic means of the economy by the state, we mean exactly that. That there are certain things you cannot give to private individuals. How do you give railway lane, railway lane to an individual? Today, there is no train that is going to move here. That's what they do. You cannot entrust that with an individual. We can entrust the locomotives with individual. That's fine. If you undermine us, we kick you out. We bring another one. But the asset, strategic asset, and what is painful is that we didn't build any railway lane. 30 years. We didn't build any city. 30 years. Everything else I'm speaking about here is from apartheid. There is no democratic city. We're told of a city going to that private airport. "Lansaria, there's going to be this and speed trains going to vendor and coming back." And we said, "You are dreaming." He said, "No, I'm allowed to dream." He agreed he was dreaming that time. He said, "I'm allowed to dream." Today, there is no strategic asset that was built by this democratic state. We inherited everything from apartheid and made it dysfunctional and collapsed it. I grew up in a township in Sishewu. We never had a problem of water. If water was not there in that township, it's that day. Today, in Sishewu, for them to have water is a call for celebration. And we thought it was in Sishewu. Now it's here. In Midrunt, in Centene, I always, you know, become so hip when I see them. They're complaining. They don't have water. "No, we don't have whatever." You're like, "Hey, my guy, this is our daily life in the villages." Do you now have a feel of what our people are going through? Not that there is no water. The infrastructure is collapsed. It was not maintained. They will never build a bridge in Johannesburg. They are still driving on apartheid bridges. And what is good about bridges is that it's engineering. It tells you the lifespan of that bridge. They don't know when was it built. They don't know what is the lifespan of that bridge, whether it's still intact or not. They wait for it to shake. And then some white people must start tweeting, "This thing is going to collapse. This thing is..." "Close it. Close, close, close." Why did we reach the state of a bridge shaking? If we are a government that cares, when you come in, you look at the state asset, what is what? Where is this and that? They have no idea. They want what is going to be paid through invoice tomorrow. That one, they will kill you. If the CFO's mother dies and then he leaves and there's an invoice, you must not come back. If this money is not paid, you must not come back. You have to abandon your mother's funeral to go and pay the invoice. They don't do that with service delivered. That if this bridge is not completed by this time, forget. No, no, they don't complete it by that time. They extend its lifespan and put more money. Look at Midupi. Midupi is costing billions of rents. It's still not being used optimally. Why? Chancellor House of the ANC is involved in the construction and building of Midupi Power Station and Kusile. Every time that tender comes to an end, "No, no, no. There's this thing. That must be fixed." How can Midupi have a structural problem in less than 20 years? The apartheid power stations are still standing. We are the ones who are demolishing them. They're still standing. Midupi collapses on its own in less than 20 years. And so much money has been spent on that. An educated black elite which knows these things allows them to happen. Because we are the ones who must be standing up and saying to our mothers in the villages, in the township, our fathers, our relatives, "This thing has to stop now." Because if it can't stop now, if we don't stop it on the 29, we must all accept our fate that things are going to become worse and would have made it possible with our votes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, President. We are now going to take hands for engagements. Shaun, are you ready with the mic? Number one, number two, number three. Yes, number four and number five. Yeah. Let's just finish it once. Six, seven, eight. Thank you. Two minutes rule. So don't be, don't give a speech. Just be on point and precise. Thank you, number one.
Yeah, even CIC.
We want to see you. We don't want agents.
Ah, CIC, no, I'm impressed with your speech. You know, I've been following all your interview, press conferences, and I must say, I'm very impressed. But the problem I have, you know, every time I tell my family, my friends that, "No, this time I'm going to vote EFF." Most of the people, they say, "No, I know." My grandma is a lobbying for to finance his lifestyle. If you vote EFF, there's nothing you're going to get. He's doing this using the poor in order to finance his lavish lifestyle. I was going on Twitter and then when I go through that, somebody was posting all those things. The family, my grandma, the kids, this so much and so much. So I said, "No, ma, this time, I want you to convince me that, no, this time I'm going to vote for EFF." But I know all these things might be not true. Thank you.
Thank you very much, number two. Shaun, faster. Yes.
Thank you, CIC. My name is Krem. I think you and I will deliver the keynote address on the funeral of Mr. Nsibi. I was the advisor of Mr. Nsibi. CIC, my question is based on two business that I'm in. I'm in the property development. My properties are based in Centene, not far from Rivonia and East Road. I built properties, townhouses there. And then the issue of expanding whereby I want to expand, then there is vacant land that I try to approach. When I approach for the people to say, "Look, I want to buy the land." Then I'll engage with someone. Someone says, "Look, yeah, let's sit down and talk." And then I talk to the guy. The guy says, "Look, the land is available for 10 million." Then we agree also to say, "Okay, look, 10 million is doable." Then later on, as I'm engaging the person, then from there later on, I get a call to say, "No, no, actually the land it owns by Mr. Kruger." Then Mr. Kruger weighs in, then Mr. Kruger is sitting in Pretoria. I call Mr. Kruger. Mr. Kruger says, "No, look, the land is available. We can engage on 60 million." So those are the problems that we are facing in terms of where we need land to develop, but the land is not available. So that is the issue that we have, especially in Centene. In Centene, there is no land that is available. All the land owns by Africaners and Chinese. That is the worst one. Then secondly, number two, I've got a farm in Balfo whereby we also deal with the government. The government will, we have the partnership whereby I do pigs and the government will come and borrow us probably maybe 10 pigs to produce them. Then later on, when they are 200 or 300, then the government will come and says, "Look, we want to take the pigs back." But at the same time, you need to pay a certain amount in order for you to save that partnership. That is the problem that I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Number three. Shaun.
Good evening, Dr. Lusi. CIC, incoming president of South Africa. I just have two questions, CIC, and I'm telling myself here. I've got two minutes that I've set up for myself so that I'm gonna finish. But before, I, as you know, there's that video of the other guy from the other organization of dollars where he's approached by someone and they are asking for a job and he said, "Just keep searching." The summary of it is that the person goes there with hope and lives hopeless. I kind of felt like that when I relate my story to you, Dr. Lusi, when I came this morning. I hope I will not live hopeless. But my question is on student debt, CIC. I read the manifesto, but there's no timelines. There are timelines on other issues of when they're gonna be done. But when is the EFF, if it comes into power, going to erase all student debt? I'm a victim of student debt. UCT is taking me to court because I owe them. So by the time I finish doing my masters at UP, I might be owing them half a million and have to pay that even before I build my grandmother's house. My last question is on what Martin Luther said about there being no justice, that there being no reconciliation without justice. And I've seen a video of you, CIC, making an apartheid judge apologize. And there are laws in Germany, for an example, that speaks directly to those issues of discrimination and racism. In South Africa, we have something called criminal injury, and it's not very specific. That is why somebody can come and apologize for apartheid or colonization or come and call us offenders and not be punished. So what is the EFF going to do to address those issues of justice? And I know in Germany, they arrested a 103-year-old in 2022 who was 22 years then during those times of the Holocaust. And so that's my question to say, what justice are we gonna have? Because clearly, that Truth and Reconciliation Commission was the circus. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Number four. Not in time and I'm not to much. We are going to dilute it, doc. Thank you very much.
Greetings. Yeah, the name is Jerome. Two things that I'd want to ask. Firstly, say thank you for the presentation. You spoke, CIC, on infrastructural development, right? And one of the things, the area that I'm involved in is youth development. And oftentimes, we take young people to to public management spaces or civic leadership spaces or entrepreneurial spaces. And when we visit government spaces, so sewer in Pretoria, for example, that thing has not been serviced since the 1800s and the early 1900s. And very little gets said and there's a lot of development happening. And I'm glad there's a brother talking about being involved in development issues. All the new developments, sewers go to same plants and have never been serviced in over 100 years. What strategies are in place for such things? Because we think of roads easily and not so much about where, you know, hygienic stuff go to. Last year, we had bricks and there is bricks youth coming up. What connections and leverage is the EFF putting in place to enable young people to benefit from bricks opportunities? Thank you.
Five.
Yeah, thanks. Mine is gonna be twofold. One is the Chinese have... actually are running almost everything on the industrial side of things. Manufacturing, production, you can think about almost everything that we can think about. We have lost our industrial hubs. We used to have industrial hubs in the eastern, in the valley, in the central of Jobek and all that. What would be the E F F plan in terms of reviving those and ensuring that these S M Ms that are complaining about creating more jobs or not, we find ourselves now getting to part because they are already advanced now. I mean, if you can try to come up with whatever revolutionary plan or innovative plan, we might find ourselves lagging behind. Because even if you think of procuring toothpicks, you can get them on Temu, you can get them in Chinese Center and all those kind of things. I mean, if I want to open even toothpick manufacturing company, I'm going to compete with the Chinese, and I might not win from a pricing point of view. That's number one. Number two, because of the industrial hubs are so overburdened, SARS and the production lines in the country, they're coming so hard with, you know, towards the S M Ms in terms of getting as much as they can to an extent that even if you can try to do business, you'll be left with nothing. So what would be the E F F, you know, plan or ideal model of ensuring that the tax burdens of solid does not necessarily disadvantage those that are starting and coming that way? Because I mean, yeah, we are really swimming, some of us who are in the manufacturing space, business-wise and all that, because they'll almost take everything because of, they keep on changing the laws, they don't need anyone to make a comment. Tomorrow, on Monday, you can wake up, put some changes on the tax legislation having changed to take even the little bit that we have to finance the non-performing, you know, production lines in the country. Those are the two things that I wanted to check.
Thank you very much. Number six. There's a lady here. Matodan, wait, wait, Shaun, bring that mic here. We are diluting the Patrick. Welcome back, lady. We are just obsessed with women participation.
Greetings, Miss the incoming president of the Republic of South Africa. So my name is Zinkley, Zinkley Putin, and I do not have questions. I'm gonna be short, even though I'm tall. I do not, I do not have questions, but just like input. I feel like when it comes to the issue of graduates not getting jobs, we're not very intentional about solving it. We always say, well, they earn jobs in the market, and then we leave it that. I think we need to start being more intentional because there is a skills mismatch, which is why some of these graduates that we have are not employable. So we need to be intentional about that. Even if it means like there has to be, you know, like a committee that will do research to find out what's the issue, what does the market needs, and also our tertiary education system seems to be a little bit outdated. So we need to also work on that because we can't be relying on syllabus of nineteen ninety-four when the issues that our country is facing today need like modern education. So that's one. And then number two, on the issue of public transport. I take issue, incoming presidency, when it comes to how the issue of public transport is addressed. We never make emphasis on it. It's as if it's not important. Transport is as crucial as water and power. You cannot run an economy on a dizzy public transport system. So we have to be intentional on improving that. And also, it will also not only improve productivity in terms of economy, but also it will help with our tourism. We have a beautiful country, but it is so hard to access some of these places. And if we have an efficient, you know, national public transport system, everybody will, you know, will easily access all these places that are touristic that can also add to our economy. That's that. Thank you.
Excellent. Number seven. We skipped that guy there in the corner for. Yeah, Genui, yes. Thank you.
Good evening, C I C. My question is on the state of NSFAS. I had a business which I decided to close shop in twenty-twenty-one. I was one of the key players in the education space with regards to procurement and printing of educational textbooks, which is very niche market, which very few people do in this country. Twenty nineteen, Blade came into power within the higher education space. So much changed. Some of it seemed to be for the better. The disbursement of NSFAS-funded students used to be administrated by a third party. A speech was given that what's supposed to be benefiting students is shared, you know, with service providers and all of that, as a result that needed to be taken away. We were happy to receive that, but we have seen recently, you know, the image of another service provider with very controversial practices that actually was just another image of the previous service provider, just in a different mask. Currently, we have seen in recent, in recent times, the NSFAS was put under administration. The CEO of NSFAS was also fired, I think, six months ago or something. So at the moment, universities who are the custodians that are managing millions in funds of private funders and private donors that are disbassing funds directly to the universities that are trusted by parents and all of that, that are paying their monies for their kids to study directly to university. Why is NSFAS an exception? Why is NSFAS money not dispersed directly to the institution to administrate them for the best interest and do away with all the middle class that are currently costing the learners in this country? I wanna know the E F F's position on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, President.
Thank you very much. I think it was a wrong decision to accept this five o'clock engagement because I'm looking at the time now, it's five to seven. But I'll try and be brief with the hope that I'm dealing with the educated people who in their own space and time will go through the E F F. You gave them copies, the E F F manifesto is the only manifesto that goes into detail of how this will be done and when and all of that. So my brother, what I'm saying now, I said this when I was to be safe president of COSAS, Congress of South African Students. I demanded free education. I demanded stopping of corporal punishment. I demanded that all kids must get school books and textbooks for free. I demanded that we should have people who are qualified to lead our schools, not on the basis of their proximity to South, but on the basis of their qualification. And COSAS was related to the A N C. It's not a structure of the A N C. COSAS, and I don't know why they always make that mistake to think they're a structure of the A N C. They are not a structure of the A N C. They were formed on their own. So I started this battle that I'm talking about today then. There was no lifestyle that I was pursuing or anything of that sort. I was an activist. I was a political activist. And I grew with these things into the Youth League, where I demanded all of this. I was not doing it because I'm running a political party for you to vote for me, for me to finance my lifestyle. I was not running a political party. I was in a party advocating for this. And we came here in Midrunt in twenty-eleven, in the biggest conference of the A N C ever held, in the whole of the A N C ever held by the A N C, because that Youth League Conference at Galaga was the biggest. That's how much we had mobilized the youth of South Africa and directed them towards the economic freedom in our lifetime. We had a march, a historic march that has never done, was never done anywhere. There's never been a protest march for those kilometers, where we marched from Pretoria to, no, from Johannesburg to Pretoria to demand jobs and economic emancipation for the people of South Africa. All of that, I was doing it in a party, not because someone must vote for me, for me to be president of South Africa. I was doing it because I believed that if the A N C takes these decisions, then South Africa will change for the better. And we won that battle. We took it from Midrunt. We took it to Etewa N G C of the A N C, where the A N C took a decision that we must expropriate land without compensation because of the resolutions of the Youth League in twenty-eleven. We influenced decisions of that N G C on every aspect. And that's where Zuma and them realized, hmm, if these people can win resolutions, it should be easy for them to win leadership against us and remove us. Then, when we took these resolutions here in Galaga, Tonya Ngani came to my house, and I had a house in Santin. Because I believe that our struggle is not to keep our people in Alexander. It's not. Our struggle is to bring our people. Our struggle is to bring our people next to where the resources are, not away from the resources. So Tonya Ngani came to my house and told me, with those resolutions, you're going to be expelled if not killed. And one of those things came to happen. So the accusation that I do this to finance my lifestyle is necessitated by the fact that you can't fault him in politics. And you start splitting hair and trying to find fault with him. Hey, he doesn't have a degree, woodwork, what, what? I fix that. Eh? I fix that. And then you come with this, I fix that. Where I'm wrong, I accept and I fix. Eh? They say you're overweight, I fix that. So I have no problem. Because they tried this and that and this and that. Because the people who are saying to his financing his lifestyle, ask them the question, do you love Nelson Mandela? The answer is going to be yes. And ask them, what is, what is it that Malima is doing, which Nelson has not done? Nelson stayed in Houghton from prison. I don't stay in Santin from prison. Mandela stayed in Houghton from prison. His spokesperson is here. Mandela's spokesperson, Carl Neos. Where he got the money to buy the house in Houghton, nobody speaks about that. Nobody speaks about that. I owned the first property in a place called Stirk Park. When I was a secretary of the Youth League, provincial secretary. When I came in, I bought a piece of land for two hundred thousand or so through the bank, financed by the bank because I was working now. And first year, I never wasted time. I knew I've got no appointment with poverty. This I'm going to confront head-on and fight. How old was I in the Youth League? I think twenty-six? Oh, so the Youth League, no, that's the president. In twenty-six, secretary. No, 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 the Youth League president I became when I was twenty-six. Twenty-six. Four years before that. No, for five years, I'd served as the Youth League secretary, which is, I was twenty-one, twenty-two when I became the secretary of the A N C Youth League. Never took my money to alcohol. Took it to my grandmother and looked after my child and looked after myself. With the little I was getting, that's why I explain to you, every little cent must have a meaning. From that time, I knew poverty and I said, I'm not going to live like this. Whatever little I get, I'll make use of it. I owned that property while renting somewhere. After two, three years, that property was worth six hundred and fifty thousand. Sold it. Stirk Park was becoming some flashy big place in Polokwan. It still is. Sold it. Paid the bank. Six hundred and fifty. Paid the two hundred of the bank, remain with four fifty. Took four hundred to go and deposit my house, which was one million rent, in Flora Park. And I ate fifty thousand nicely in June. From there, I worked, serviced that bond. Then bought a house in Santin when I became the president of the Youth League. How, then I was financed by Absa. The first one was financed by Nedbank. At least not yet. The second one, I don't remember who financed me. And then this one of Santin, I'm sure, I was financed by Absa. All kinds of A N C leaders who could think of gathered in that house. It was just an ordinary house of three bedroom, one in suit and the rest, three bedroom and then they say, common bathroom. Any leader of the A N C you can think of was always there. And they were like, hey, man, you know, when we sleep here, the problem is that we meet each other in the morning to the bathrooms. We need to renovate this house. They all brought money together. Remember, I'm too young, I'm twenty-six. They brought the money together themselves and then demolished my house and started building a house there. It was built, that house, by A N C leaders, not me. Not me. That bond I'm telling you about, I'm still paying it now. So I can account for everything of mine. It's just that some things are over-exaggerated. I mean, there used to be a story when we renovated that house. Dr. Lusi, for sure you're still in, where were you during that time? They were saying in that house, there is a banker. And gallant people of South Africa believed that. Believed that. That this guy is building a huge house with a banker. And this banker goes this way, is going to come out from the airport. I'm like. Then SARS came, and SARS said, hey, my guy, what is this renovation you are doing? I'm like, eh? It's not me. It's these guys, but they are doing it for you. Whatever happens, it's you. Who's going to benefit from this? You owe us. I went to the same people. There was no problem. They added those things of penalty and what do you have declared, donations. I went to them. I said, you remember that money you brought there to build that house? It's causing me trouble. Here's the tax bill. You must pay. You have to pay. So these old people around me always have always taken care of me. Because I was in the Youth League. I was in COSAS. I grew up in the eyes of these guys. So there is nothing, nothing. That's why I speak the way I speak. That's why I do whatever I do because I'm not scared anyone can come with some skeleton and say, yeah, I'm not scared anyone can come with some skeleton and say, yeah, we finish you off. They tried that when I was a baby. They won't do it now. Now SARS send a letter. I will not miss it by a second. Because I know SARS is a weapon that can be used to destroy you by your political opponents. And because it raises legitimate issues, but it gets used wrongly. You're owing them. SARS will never come saying you don't owe them. If you don't owe them, you owe them. They will come. But why should SARS be so aggressive? Instead of making you to be compliant? This, 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 this? No. SARS has got a law. You pay now and argue later. Where will you pay? Where will you get the money? They use that then to destroy you. Because it's pay now, argue later. They destroy you. There will never be an argument later because that is court. That is court. Then they auctioned my house because these guys couldn't raise the money and all of that. Auctioned it live on television. I'm the only person whose houses were auctioned live on television. Trying to humiliate me. Um, now, after they did that, a person goes and buy that house in public, right? They say, no, he's sent by me. I don't know the guy. And now I start investigating. Why do they say I sent this guy? This guy comes from Seshew. What a coincidence. They're like, I've never met the guy, he even passed on. Never met him, but he was sent by me to go and buy the house. And people believed that, that this guy can go with 3 million and give this guy to go and buy that house. And people of South Africa are like, no man. What do you mean? So they tried with all of those things of lifestyle, lifestyle audit, Mashaba says we must do lifestyle audit. SARS conduct lifestyle audit on everyone. They don't even care about whether you are you are grown or not. They just send you a questionnaire, say, yeah, answer all of this. And if you don't make sense, they come for you. So we don't need Mashaba's lifestyle audit. We've got institutional mechanisms already to do that. Um, my brother, the property in Santi. Eh, I'm even shocked you saying it's owned by Africaners because I thought it was the Jewish people who make the property available in public. You go and make a bid. And then you sign offer to purchase. Once they discover it's you, black men, they cancel and withdraw that thing from advertisement. And then it will circulate like they withdraw it a bit and then they come back again until there is a right person to buy it. Now you say you've got 10 million, you signed the offer to purchase, they start investigating, they're like, okay, he can get 10 million this one. Remember, these are the people who own banks. They've got access to all our finances. They say, no, you can't get 10. No, this is a real owner. Eh, but they know you can't afford 60, but no, 60. So what I said about so wait, they use money to keep racism in property. Because they know black people cannot afford. That's why I'm saying, let's take this land. And because this is the idling land, you want to use it. A man he says, no, you can't. Until you give me 60 million. We have to take that land so you come to us and say, this thing makes sense. We say, no, go and build there. There's no problem. This person has got a purpose to use this land for. When you have been idling with this land forever. So the land expropriation is inspired by those things that you guys want to farm, want to be property developers. The land is more expensive than the property itself that stand on that land. I mean, to get a land in Santi is very difficult and it's done deliberately through money to keep black people out of Santi. I don't, I don't know, you said the farmers, is that Mpumalanga? Yeah, I think it's Mpumalanga. So we may want to ask Colin to make a follow-up on this one of Pigs because I'm also in farming. So what they do in Limpopo, they used to give us the Nguni females. And then maybe you were 10 and then give you one male and leave you for a particular period, I think five years. After that, they ask for their females back and their male. Then you continue with what came from their females. So there was no paying of anything. They gave you 10 cows, you must bring back 10 cows after five years. Eh, so they never said, you bring 10 cows back plus money. No, that, that sounds very dodgy. Because the aim is to enable you to enter farming. Yet you don't have money. So the state is supporting black farmers to be professional farmers, but they need the tools. So you can't give the tools and say, no, I actually borrowed you. Pay me. No, it sounds very dodgy. So it's an interesting story that we need to follow up. Um, you know, the president failed that Dintalo when he said, keep searching for a job. Because the president should have outlined what programs are there. There is this, there is this, there is this. The president doesn't know the plans because the plans do not exist. How do you say to an old man who says, I want a fridge, buy me a fridge? Say, where were you working? I was going to go and tell them to buy you a fridge. Which leader says that? Because the president can say, I'll buy you a fridge. I accept that. But the president will say, Mwese. Oh, hey, wa, 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 mukhala, baguera. Eh, eh, mala. Eh, Mwese, ni go, laka, shala, laka, frige, you talk about the frige. Eh, it's a very important aspect. Mwese, ni understand the language. That he must buy the free. You assign someone there, right there. Because he moves around by the way, this door to door with business people and all of that. Just say, help the old man. The old man meets a president, the young woman meets a president. The fact that you came into contact with president, something must give. Motu, uno, zena, kango, abata, ma, kango. I'll know anything. Ugabari has never been here. Because that's what he did in Amanskrall. He goes there, people die of cholera. He goes there, he's pretending to be caring. He left Amanskrall till today. That rainfall thing has not been fixed. If anything, situation is worse. How can the pres- you don't go if you don't have a plan. You first work on a plan. And then you go there because you've got a solution. You go there because you've got a solution. You, 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 you go like you are listening and listening. You see, what's going to happen? Minister of Water, I want this. You, I want. It's not true. They told him, we're going to do 1, 2, 3. Let's go. But he goes there, he doesn't know who's going to do what. Oh dear, he's overborne. You're just going to see them. A president overborne. No, the president, once he stepped in here, done. Our problems are solved. And the problems of Amanskrall are simple. The rainfall water treatment plant's budget has been stolen by individuals. A tender was given. Money has been paid. The product is not there. I become a president or a deputy president or anything of that sort. I take that project, I even establish a site office. I go there twice a week. We have to finish this thing. You monitor it yourself because you went there. I'm going to be visiting. And Amanskrall is not Giyani. It's next to the Union Building. What, what stops the president from making a turn at Amanskrall to check if there's progress? People are dying of cholera before he goes to his office. You clear my diary, I'm going to run this program for the next three months, we're going to complete this thing. And if we don't complete, these heads are going to roll. So you, you, because it's an executive president. The rest, the so-called minister of this, those things are nothing. They are assistants of the president on education. Assistants of the president on finance. The man in charge, it's him. That's why you can fire anyone. And it requires no reason to fire you. No, it's all saying, ah, don't cheat me, I cancel. No more minister. Why, why in saying, aye? It doesn't have to explain. I tell you to come and fix this thing of water treatment plant, you don't do it. You don't do it. It's fine. We shall release you in the morning through a statement. We don't even tell you. Just release a statement. It's done. There's no Labour Court, no C C M E. Eh, student debt, there's no eh, eh, what do you call it? Time frame. Because it's done immediately. It's part of the presidential speech that all of the student debt must be canceled. Why does it need five years or anything? We, we are fighting every day now demanding that the student debt must be canceled. We even sponsored a bill, Mwese, about the cancellation of the student debt in parliament. Now, before we became government, the A N C used its majority and rejected it. We sponsored a bill to insource cleaners, to insource security guards so that we can improve their lives. A N C rejected it. Ah, my biggest problem with security guards is that our fathers come and work here. And they work as security guards at the Jobek Municipality. At the gate for 30 years. He comes back with nothing. And then, when you come back with nothing, they say, wamuyile basaidwa, wama chaus. Wama hui. Eh, wamuyile. But that is not true. That is not true. The guy has worked at the gate of the municipality for 30 years without a pension fund. Why? Every three years, a new company comes in. They, they exchange with this old man from one company to the other, from one company to the other. By the time he retire, this company is actually six months. But what would you ask? No wish. Then he packs his things, he comes back home. We say he was useless. He was never useless. There were no pension funds. There was no medical aid. There were no leave days. There was no job security. Once you go and leave, or when you come back, someone is there. Someone is there. There is no guarantee. So the A N C rejects that. The A N C rejects insourcing cleaners which are cleaning in government offices. Our argument is that these people are working with us. They are cleaning M E C's offices. We don't even know the owner of that company. We know this good cleaner. Why can't we have a direct relationship with this cleaner without a middleman? So we have to correct that when we take over power. Eh, and, and, and we also propose now, and I'm happy everyone now is talking about it. When we started it, they were saying it's a crazy idea. We said we need to give graduates jobs. If we can't give them jobs, we must give them a grant. Because they can't go to school only to come back to earn 350 like the rest of other people who have not gone to school. We must say education pays and it must pay in a literal meaning. And they say, where will the money come from? Where? There are no so many graduates. Not so many. We can take care of them with reprioritizing our priorities. Like I told you of Cape Town, I told you of provincial governments and all of you redirect all of that to benefit the needy and those are the graduates. A graduate has to prove, the same way people prove when we give them 350, that they've got no, any means of income. A graduate has to prove over a period of time that indeed I've been trying here, I applied here, I went interview here. And there must be that database of graduates. Where the government, when a person says, I need 10 people for this, the government must go in database and say, but the people are here, withdraw and give him. We don't even know our graduate. I don't know where the mismatch of skills come from because we don't know this graduate. We don't know who are they. We don't know their qualifications. We don't know them. These people, there must be a database. And it must be hosted by that department of Tula Sinais of employment. Because his department is supposed to be looking for jobs and placing people. It's useless. I went here at Waterfall the other day at the restaurant where they were saying they are hiring foreigners and what. Hey, let me go and see what's happened. And typical leader of African people, I go there and prepare. The guy says to me, here are the post, my guy. The people employed here, this is the percentage, South Africans oversubscribed, no problem. But he says, I need 10 for all my restaurants, chefs. I've been advertising. It's not coming through. But I'm happy you are here. If you can give me 10 chefs, I don't even have to interview them. They come, they come from the C I C take. I still haven't submitted. Apa, ki, ki, lewele, ma, kumre, du. Alis, mi, di chef, bu, no. Apa, merakush. Monalukhu are no problem. Give me, I've been advertising. Give me. And then these people who are playing with this are from outside. I'm holding this back with that understanding that you are saying to me. So I'm trying to find. I was supposed to go to the database and find the the chefs on the government database where chefs graduate and register there. When he says to me, I need 10 chefs, I've been advertising, he say, you are lying. You were supposed to search here. This is where we find our people. There is no such a platform. There's no such a platform of rapists. People rape. Get sentenced, go to jail. Come back from prison to become teachers, primary teachers. Because no one can trace these guys that this is a rapist. Must not be brought anywhere to a girl child. Because once we start doing that, then people know, mm-mm. This has got future and serious implications. Whereas your name is in public forever, is there. People know the kind of crimes you committed, especially the crime of rape. We cannot issue such a simple database. Simple database. We have a child who goes to a no fee school. This child goes to university, get N S, when he arrives, no. Primary, no fee school. Secondary, no fee school. When he arrives at tertiary, they want registration fee. Throughout, they've been saying you are poor, can't go to this free school. We even give you a fitting scheme. Eh, we even give you food parcels. But what makes it worse is that my mother is a beneficiary of Sasa. Sasa, which is the state. Which the state is supposed to plug all these Sasa beneficiaries on the university database. So because when you arrive there, they want your parents' ID. When they punch it, it must say Sasa beneficiary. Automatically, this child qualifies to come in. But they don't have that data. They don't have a data of patients. You go to a hospital in Tembisa, you've got these allergies, they get identified, no problem. You don't take this medicine. You leave. You go to VAAL. You collapse in VAAL. You can't speak to tell them what are your allergies. They inject you with those allergies. But if there was a database, they go in there, it gives your medical history. Why? For 30 years, eh, eh, technology, I T graduates, are there? Why, for thirty years, eh, eh, technology, IT graduates, are there? Who can do this thing? But they are not being used because they are eating from the files. No file this, file that, so. We really need a government of thinkers, which is going to appreciate that. Every graduate must be accounted for. You know what is painful for me is that. Eh, you know, at university, when you apply for NS first, they say, where's the parents, you know? My father died, this, 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 they say, no, bring the death certificate. How, or we're going to have it, have it. How can government not know that my father died when they issued a death certificate? They are the ones who certified my father dead, they come and say, I must prove. That he's dead, I must prove that they said he's dead. There will never be justice, my brother. I mean, there will never be reconciliation without justice, this thing we're demanding of the land. Is justice. That's, that's simple, the economy must be in the hands of the people because it was robbed from them. And. The EFF government will prosecute apartheid agents. We know them, we know the operators of Flag Plus. Eh, kasp edim, we say, nbar malatwa ubo uli. Were going to go after them. And that's what they don't want, that's why they don't want the EFF, they know these ones are going to give us a problem. Where are those judges that were hanging people? No one speaks about them. No one dares to write about them, that this one was a hanging judge. A hangist of note. And that's justice. That's justice to go and look for these people. So, my brother sewer treatment, water treatment plant, infrastructural maintenance, all of that is what you need. Not only for. Infrastructural development, for job creation. You will never create jobs if you don't turn this country into a construction site. That's the only way you're going to create jobs. How do you have the whole province, the whole year? Or five years worse? You have never built a single road. One. You have never asked us that there's going to be some maintenance, we're going to close water. So that you can take out asbestos pipes and put proper pipes to avoid leaks. You've never done that. The only time you, there is no water, it's not because you are doing anything, it's because the infrastructure collapsed. Not because you are maintaining it. Eh. Eh, you know, BRICS, they don't want us there, by the way, the EFF, when there is any BRICS activity. So even if we say we've got these plans of the youth, in terms of BRICS, eh, eh, once you saw a red beret. But eh 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 eh, not here, not here, not here. Not here. So they always exclude that, not the BRICS countries, the state of South Africa. Which we have to go as part of, they say, no, not these ones. But the BRICS idea is a very good idea that we must support. Where we create alternative economies and alternative markets. And we can trade amongst ourselves. And that's where the proper discussion about de-dollarizing can take place. And that's how, that's a platform where we can neutralize America's influence over the world. Eh, it's unfortunate, you know, eh, the tariffs, we, we have to charge. Extremely crazy tariffs. For anything that is going to come from outside South Africa. If we want to support infant industries in South Africa. If there is an industry like a chicken industry. And you allow Agowa to come, to come and dump. Chicken in South Africa, then chicken industry will never grow. Since Agowa, our chicken industry closed down, why? In America, they only eat white meat of the chicken, like chicken breast and. This thing that you over celebrate here, say chicken wings, they don't eat those things there. They don't want. Things like chicken wings, including the skin, now the skin of the chicken gets sold. They don't eat the skin, they don't eat the chicken feet, they don't eat the inside, they don't eat the head. All of that get wrapped and dumped here in South Africa. Effectively at no cost, because they don't lose anything, they were going to throw them away. So you can buy them, buy them for any amount. When you go around saying you are buying pieces of chicken. Those are the things from there, which have, they've rejected. They come, get sold here. Majijala ozena pikin pe, badikchale mina tana, they sell chicken feet, they. Eh, dipe luja dihko. Like. They sell them because they get them close to nothing and they sell them to us. At a lower cost, when you produce chicken here in South Africa. You can't, you can't meet that. So we need to relook into that Agowa. And say, what are the sectors of the Agowa which are threatening? Small industries in South Africa which have got potential to create jobs. So we need to charge very high tariffs, get customs to work at the airport. So that we avoid this counterfeit. That are entering our country and undermining our industrial development. I mean textile industry in the Western Cape was big. Was one of the biggest. Even in my township, we had a, eh, 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 you know, a farm, a factory of eh. Eh, producing clothes, textile factory in my own township. Which hired a lot of people, closed down. Closed down. We can revive it. By not fighting with the Chinese. By saying to them, no problem, when you bring those things to us. You are going to pay so much to get them, no, no, not you even, the one who's bringing it into our country. Inside our, the one who's inside our country, bringing things from outside. We charge you a crazy tariff interest. So much that when you put a price on that item you brought from outside, it's too expensive. And ours is able to rise. That is the only way, we don't fight with China, we're like, no, we're trading together, it's no problem. Where, now you go and buy from China, where? With these things of online. When you enter there. There is no hair which is going to enter there. If we have hair here, we can do those things of hair here. You bring hair. You're going to pay more. So that those ones who produce local, they are reasonable and cheap and people buy from them. That's how you support your own industries. Eh. So that's how we aim to revive our industries and our eh, eh, textile industry in particular. We have no issue with the Chinese. We have a problem with the people who are in South Africa, who buy from China to undermine our own economy. People must be forced to buy South Africa. And that is the only way we're going to make sure we support eh, our own local. SMMEs are close to our heart because those are creators of jobs. The more SMMEs you have, the more receptionists you have, the more this you have, the more messengers you have them. There has to be. Tax incentives for SMMEs because they cannot be charged the same percentage. As the mining company, they are called corporate tax. There has to be a difference between a big industry and a small industry. And we say, when you reach this bracket this way, then you, we can amend you to go, to fall into this other category. But just from when you start. They are here on your neck. Eh, you have been declared, I declare what, I haven't got anything, I, I didn't get any job the whole year. And SMMEs that goes and business that goes and open their industries and factories. In the areas outside Khauting. There has to be incentives, because we have to depopulate this place. It's going to become a nightmare very soon. We have to depopulate this place and you depopulate it by decentralizing the economy. Why would someone want to leave Messina if there is an economic activity in Messina? They will stay there and do their own thing there. So we have to make sure that we. Decentralize the economy, we bring in efficient public transport. You know, to move from Sawetu. To Santin, if you work in Santin and you stay in Sawetu. It will take you three hours. To come in here. Because there's no reliable public transport and the traffic is jammed. If you go to Sawetu during weekends, you will regret why you went there. You can't move. Now. What is so difficult about going to China and say to them? Come build a speed train. For us there. And operate it, we don't, we don't want anything from you. We engage in BOT, build it, operate it. But after thirty years, transfer it to us. Imagine if we had asked that intervention on our power station in nineteen ninety-four. Those things will be transferred to us this year. Why are you so obsessed, who's building it, eh eh eh, build it. You want to build it, build it. Charge them. No problem, we're going to agree on how you go about it, it's okay, they are lost in South Africa and all of that. What is my immediate interest? My immediate interest is to supply my people with a reliable public transport. Then I build a speed train between Johannesburg and Musina. It takes an hour, remember, Sawetu takes three hours. Now imagine a speed train from Pulukwane drops me in Santin in one hour's time. Legasambonamo, kibareka from Rye. Aki chai shamo kiya speed training, kwelemra. It's safe, it's home, it's cheaper, because when I stay here, I run two homes. I can run one home with a reliable public transport. Why haven't we not built speed train? But we built Khauting. And Khauting is not transporting our people. It's even there, those roads, the way they go, the, where Khauting goes, you know. It's not shame. Ba ilodi ya ne airport, ba tvarana, ba yakai ka ini. Bar banamele Khauting, ba ya airport, ba, ba ya ka ya airport, eh, bo ya ka ya airport. Ba tubah gaba tubah, Johannesburg CBD, Sawetu. Johannesburg CBD, Sawetu. Pitoru, Orange Farm, imam iloud. Go where our people are and give them reliable transport. And then you must subsidize the taxis, the taxis are not being subsidized. The only way we're going to professionalize this industry of the taxis is when we give it money. And when they talk too much, we're like, we'll withdraw this money, what do I say? This is how you're going to behave, you go this way, this. We don't have a problem of buses. No one can bully the state from buses because we subsidize them. Once you buy a bus, you're already getting a subsidy. So we need to finance the taxis so that we control them. We professionalize it, we also regularize the salaries of taxi drivers. Because they are paid according to the feeling of the owner. Yeah, if there's sometimes they beat them up, you see. You scratched it here, for the next three weeks, you are not getting a salary. So we need to regulate the industry so that it also contributes to efficient public transport. Eh, NS first, no, no, I wanted to talk about E-Tolls, you know? We told you in twenty fourteen that E-Tolls must go. Dalimpov was even a premier candidate here in Khauting for the EFF. He went demonstrating there. Aroka tadi chibi jelele. Gamthri sathrin. Sahar, who, when the EFF takes over, we're going to cut these things. Ten years ago. Dalimpov went and said, these things must fall and fall in a literal way. Ten years after, Panyaza is standing next to the E-Tolls. With eh, 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 countdown. Hey, we've worked, we've worked. But we said this ten years ago, that this is wrong. Because the EFF is ten years ahead of all of them, they are all tailing behind the EFF. My sister, tourism is another way we're going to create a lot of jobs. How this state is not supporting tourism, I don't understand. Reliable, public transport, but equally, we need to support tourism. Tourism, it has got tour guides, it has got a driver, it has got a waiter, it has got eh. A receptionist, it has got cleaners, you know, there are so many jobs. That are easily available to our people. Easily, we train them, train them, easily done, let's go. Imagine what tourism can do in Mpumalanga. Kruka. Is the only rural province where a plane, big plane goes and land there. Full of white tourists. Full. And then all of them are going to sleep in white owns hotels. They, they, those eh, eh, they, they, the transport, that, that's not shirt, that one they use for safari. It's white. White, why can't you just say one? Yeah, we're going to get ten black owned companies to provide those safari cars. What, what is that? Because until I give Vene, there is nothing special about that thing. Give Vene, they put it, those steel thing, sometimes if you are lucky, there is a saila nyana when it rains. What is that? Because our people are driving baggies every day, what's special about that? But that is owned by white men. White men, ten baggies, each one of you give us ten. Let they be eh, BNB's and all of that in White River, in Nelsprade. Hoodspade, all of those areas where the tourists are going. And deliberately, as a government, promote black owns. Because those people, when they come, they ask our own tourism. What are the areas to visit? Eh, which places can we sleep in? They are, they are guided by our tourism, every province has got a tourism department. But it gives them direction into white establishments. Because no one is there to subsidize you establishing a proper BNB and babysit that dream. And make sure this becomes a success, it will succeed in many other places. No, that has to go. Eh, the Kruka statue has to go, like any other apartheid symbol, I mean, we are the only ones. That have got a statue in each and every town of an apartheid general. Every town. The people that oppressed us are displayed in public to be celebrated for oppressing us. And we put them there. There is Kruka statue, is it Kruka in Pretoria? The Kruka. We had nice plans to collapse that thing. At night, the ANC had. And went to erect a fence there to protect a statue of Kruka. That one of Kruka National Park is a bit difficult because I agree you have to go at night. And that Kruka, there might be those things. You may not even be shot by anyone. The things are waiting for you there. So you can't take that risk. So you can't take that risk. That one, we have to remove it officially like we did with Cecil John Rhodes at University of Cape Town. And as far as my brother, it's a mess. We don't even want to go there. EFF manifesto is very clear. Let the money go directly to the institutions of Hali. This university, I know how many children it can take. It's my university, it's a state-owned institution, I know. Now, if each student must be financed by hundred rand and they are ten, I'll give you one thousand because I know in that university I've got ten. Each allocation is here. Listen to that beautiful argument. Why affording parents are not paying NSFAS for NSFAS to pay university for their children? Affording parents pay directly to the university. Government is paying for me. Why government is my parent? Why is government not doing like this private parent who pays directly to the university and pay for Julius Malim? Why? They can't do it because there must be a middle man. And that middle man is related to the Communist Party of Bladen's Monday and finances the Communist Party. And you picked it up correctly. Then there was a mess around this person. No, go, 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 go. They remove him and then bring him through a back door in a different name to continue the financing of the Communist Party. Now they realize, no, this appointment of this and that is not working, let's take it directly. Yes, now put it under administration. Because under administration means now he's got control over that money without any due process. Let the university monies be paid directly to universities and not through any other agent. And NSFAS must close down. There's got no role to play, nothing. Treasury must allocate the same ways allocating other departments. These institutions are the departments of the state. Let the state finance them directly. When they take money from treasury to the Department of Health, they don't give some agent to come and give the Department of Health. Why is it different when it comes to institutions of Hali? Because these institutions of Hali are state-owned. Let the state be responsible for that. So our biggest problem with tenders is exactly that, that we've got this middle man all over even where it is not necessary. I mean, you get a tender advertised to buy toilet paper. There's a big tender. Twenty, a twenty rand toilet paper gets sold for hundred and fifty rand. If you are lucky, because it, because it can be one thousand rand. Yeah, it can be one thousand rand. If you are lucky, they will give it to you by one fifty, otherwise it can be one thousand rand. I mean, look at those shacks that Stan Matabata built in Zanin during Covid. Each one of them was costing us what? Five hundred thousand muku. And then he went to open the shacks, those shacks he did during Covid when they were saying they are placing homeless people. Built the shacks, paid thousands of money and put a ribbon to go and cut them. Because a tender was given to one of them. That's a problem with the tender system. Thank you very much. I'm not going to sit down, please allow me from here to just leave because I'm speaking again at the eh Santin Convention Centre. Thank you very much, thank you.
Uh, thank you very much. Eh, Che, come and do the vote of thanks quickly then we close. Yeah, we, we have a branch here, respect their leadership. Eh, thank you very much uh for all of eh business people, professionals, eh people around Mitren um who came here to listen to the manifesto of the EFF from the CIC. And to also, to some who don't know, uh Mitren one one two is the, eh number one branch of the EFF in the whole country. It gives EFF four thousand four hundred uh during national elections. So we are expecting to even get more eh at this time around. I thank you.